Good evening, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is our June 8 business meeting, last business meeting of the school year. If you could rise please to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, welcome everybody. We always have this kind of crowd at our last meeting of the year, so it's wonderful to have you visiting with us tonight. We have a lot to go over at our meeting, a lot of recognition, last meeting of the school year, so I'll turn the meeting over to -- let me -- the record show that Mr. De Grego is excused this evening, he had a work commitment, and I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Feazer to start student staff recognition.
So to reiterate what you said, this is really an exciting evening. I want to invite all of the students, their parents and families and staff members here, we're more crowded than we usually are and that's great. I'd like to say it's so exciting that you're coming to hear the board and to hear me, but the reality is, I know that you're here so that we can recognize students and we're really proud and thrilled to be able to do this as well. So I'm going to begin by first, we have our liaisons, for those of you that may not know this, both Foreign High and Law High School have student representatives that are literally the representatives from the Board of Ed and they come to every single meeting, and so what we want to do this evening is to bid farewell and thank you to those who have served during the year, and then also to welcome our new liaisons who will take up the gavel so to speak next September. So, I'd like to ask if Sophia Calvin and Kelsey Kapasna, Tyler Portello and Shayna Arsenal would come up? These are our current student representatives.
Arms are on their way.
They're on your way. Should we wait and move on to something else?
They should be in. They are coming together.
So is anyone like 30 seconds? So all right, what I'm going to have to do because we want to recognize all four, is why don't you go -- I'm going to ask you to sit down then and move on, okay? So actually, the next set of recognitions are really for our, for four of our federal students. You may or may not have noticed that we have art pieces here, these young art pieces, and I'm going to talk with you, not about the individual pieces, I'm actually going to ask the students to come up and do that, but I'm going to talk with you about why is it that they are here this evening and why we're recognizing art, and if you can't see them really well, we also put pictures and they're actually up on the screen here so that people can see. So I'm going to, there are two students from Foreign High and two students from Law High School. Unfortunately, one of the students, Matilda Hill, who painted, this is the Federal House here called Tranquil Water, is not able to be here tonight. She's at UConn's orientation, that's where she's going to be attending school next year, but I know her mother and Mrs. Mayne, her art teacher, are both here and will be accepting the award on her behalf, and here come the two Law.
They're here.
So I'm going to first ask if Kyla Benedetti would come up, who was a student of Foreign. So Kyla did a piece called Double the Love, which is this picture that's up on the screen here, and you can see it over here. Before I talk, I have her talk a little bit about her piece, let me just talk with you about why we do this. So we absolutely love art, and what many of you may not realize is that in the springtime the walls out here are covered with art, beginning in March, I think? March through last week, we start with the elementaries, actually the K-2, then the 3-5, then the middle schools, and then the high schools is the culmination. And the people here, not just in the school system, but also the people in the government offices, all, everyone loves the artwork, it just, it just lifts us spirits every day to walk down the halls and see the students' art. And then when it comes down, there's just this sort of sadness, you come in in the morning and it's just this bareness, it's just unbelievable. Every year, the pieces that are created by our students generate discussion among our staff and among the community, and if you think that's not the case, the students who are involved here, I shared with the teachers, I'm walking down the hall one day and I see a group of secretaries from upstairs standing in front of a piece from the high school and they're, they're, they're talking about this piece, it was about five or six people that were standing there, and we see people from outside do the same thing. People, when they walk in, they say, "These are all high school pieces," or "These are middle school pieces, but here tonight we're talking about the high school pieces." Wow, look at this, you know, these are all Milford Public Schools students, like they're sort of blown over by the quality of the work that they see. So over the years, the pieces being displayed have been just phenomenal, but once they're down, they're gone. So in 2012, with the support of the Board of Education, what was decided was is that each year we would purchase some pieces from students at Foreign and Law to become, to start a permanent collection of student art that would be with the school system then forever. And so that's what the four pieces tonight are, the four pieces that we're purchasing from this year's senior class into Foreign and to Foreign Law. We made the decision to help our collection grow, we originally started off with one piece, I'm from each school, and we decided to do two pieces each this year, so there's a total of four. And I'm going to start with Kyla, who is again a senior at Foreign High School, and she, you know, has done this piece, and just so you know, all four of these pieces will be matted and framed, their names, school, the title of the piece will be in a, what's the term I want to use, it's a little silver.
Black card.
Black card, that's part of the picture itself, and they'll be hung then. If you go into the superintendent's office and you look on the wall, there are about eight pieces right now from students over the last three years, and so these four pieces will be added to it. So we're thrilled, and what we've asked each of the artists to do is to talk just a little bit about their piece, so you know why it's such a remarkable piece. So with that, Kyla, I'm going to turn it over to you, I don't know if it's easier for you to point out things in the, up here, or, okay, if you talk loud so everybody can hear.
Good evening. Growing up, I loved the magic of painting art with a camera. I came to love the genre of portrait photography while I was assisting my aunt doing her own photo shoots. It was amazing to watch her as she captured the essence of a person while their guard was down. That's when I realized portrait photography was for me. This piece was included in my AP Studio Art Concentration that focused on environmental portraiture. Environmental portraiture consists of observing a person in their natural state and setting them up. The moment I photographed lasted second, so I had to shoot quickly in order to preserve the mother, the love and happiness between a mother and her children. To get the wow image, I had to go through many, many frames, and as I continue to go on, I'm excited to improve my skills and learn more about the world around me through the images I create.
What are you doing this year?
I'm attending Southern, Connecticut State University, and I'm majoring in photography.
And you check in? Next I'd like to ask Trevor Asborn to come up also for Foreign High. So Trevor's piece is called Gaining But Losing, and you see it up here, and it's also Divine Tim, the original. So do you want to talk about this, I know it was also part of your portfolio?
Yes, it was. The project, this is only on the year, the project, my teacher, my lovely teacher, Mrs. Arsenal, was metamorphosis, so, you know, something including change. So what I thought of was what happens, I wanted to cap, what I wanted to do was capture what happens to a lot of people in society, in local societies, not just like the United States. And so what I did was, I have three stages almost of a person's life. So, you know, in the beginning, there's like the little child, then the teenager, then the adult. And as you can see with the child, it's very, very colorful, and it's very free, there's no boundary around it, and then as I moved on, I wanted to condense that boundary more to indicate like how, as a person grows, they actually start to take a consideration of what other people view and how they consider, you know, their creativity, and a lot of times, as you grow up, people kind of get pushed away from that. The idea of being creative and more towards academics and business and things along those lines, which is clearly represented in the last one, as he has almost no color behind him, indicating that he has almost, or completely, no creativity left because of the pressures from society, which is why I named this piece Gaining But Losing. So while you're gaining age, you're losing creativity you want. I'm going to Savannah College of Art Design, and I'm leaning towards animation, but I did whatever I wanted to.
I'd like now to call up Evelyn Pastrow. Well Evelyn's piece is called Metamorphic, and again Evelyn is from Law High School, her teacher, Mrs. Mayne is here. So if you want to, this is the piece here.
So the assignment was kind of to pick an animal and create a realistic version of it, and then kind of a surreal version of it, and I really wanted to have a transition between, I wanted them to be very connected, both the surreal and the realistic version, so I chose a peacock because of the, like its brilliant colors and I really liked the pattern of it, and I kind of, I named it Metamorphic because I wanted it to be a transition between surreal and the realistic, and it kind of, the surreal version highlights the, what I really like about the animal, which is the colors and the pattern, and so I used that throughout, and then the peacock is a bird, so I thought about like flying, and I wanted the surreal one to encompass the realistic one, and it's kind of overhead, so that was my idea, kind of. Oh, I used chalk pistols, and, well, I used pencil to draw it, and then I went back and I used all the chalk pistols.
New York University, studying?
Psychology.
Psychology. I should introduce both teachers who are here of these students. Susan Hudson is here, and Mary Mayne is also here. The piece that we're purchasing is this piece here, which is called Tranquil Winter. Again, it's by Matilda Hill. She isn't here, but I've asked Mrs. Mayne if she could come up and talk a little bit about the piece.
We have.
Also appear too.
Oh yes, beautiful. We have, we have two young ladies from Law here who are just top-notch students in our school, and we're just so very proud of them, and we're proud of the beautiful conceptual artwork from Foreign, and it's just so exciting to have this purchase award and to be part of this. Just speaking about Matilda a little bit, as a testament to her stature and leadership within our art community, Matilda was elected the president of our Jonathan Law National Art Honors Society. Both of these young ladies are top students, we're so proud of them. Matilda's painting, Tranquil Winter, began as a simple perspective drawing, that's all that was necessary for it to be, and in Matilda's style, she took her project further, choosing some warm greens and warm terracotta-type colors and warm shadows, because she told me she wanted it to be winter scene, but she didn't want it to be cold, she wanted it to be warm and inviting. I'm sure I speak for all the students when I say that we'd like to thank our principal, Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Cummings and Dr. Feazer for this opportunity to win this purchase award and to be able to showcase our students' beautiful artwork. And where's, is this, is this Matilda's mom there?
Matilda's parents are there, or her mom?
Maybe her mom is going to be able to come. I know she's at orientation show, so maybe they all did that together. I will take that first. Thank you.
So, pretty exciting, and the board feels really good, again, to everybody. What's so exciting is all of these pieces will be mounted professionally, and then they'll hang here, and the students will get recognition because of the nameplates that will be part of it, and it's just, I think it's a really a great thing.
I was just going to ask, is that the final sample of?
No.
So while we're talking about art, I want, I have the privilege of talking about this final piece, which is not going to be part of our, it's the last piece, it's not going to be part of our permanent collection, it's not staying here. Mike, the board is actually gifting this to you. We felt that we wanted to send, send you off with a token of our appreciation for your dedication. You've really done a great job as the art supervisor the last few years, I've been impressed with what I'm seeing coming out of our art department, but we wanted to give you something to remember us by, hopefully you'll maybe hang it in your office, you think of it every day, and remember your roots.
At least my sneakers.
Yes. For those of you that maybe don't remember Mike when he.
Was younger.
There's noted for his sneakers.
Color.
His brothers' sneakers were, were his trademark, and so this is by Foreign student Alex Tobin. Is Alex here this evening? I'm glad she might be coming. And is Chip Kazowski, I'm sorry if I. So Chip is Alex's teacher, and they help, you know, the, our teachers help with the selection, something that they feel would like and appreciate, and again, we, you know, remember your roots are here in Milford. You're not going anywhere, not going too far, but really, we just thought that we'd like to give you something to take along with you, we'll consider public schools as you move on, so.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
So I'm going to ask if Sophia Calvin, Kelsey Kapasna, Tyler and Shayna would come up again? Again, these are our four student reps, two from Law, two from Foreign, who have been with us, braced us with their presence every single month. So our student liaisons to the Board of Education provided an invaluable service to their schools and the community at large. These individuals are responsible for preparing a report and reading it at every business meeting, so they come to every single board meeting, God bless them, seriously. The report is intended to bring our board members and the public up to date on activities that have occurred or will be occurring at each of the high schools, and provide a snapshot sometimes of their thoughts and opinions of our high school students district-wide, maybe on a particular issue. It's a, it's a really large responsibility that they have to do this once a month, they're required to collect all the information they need, they prepare the reports, and then they're responsible for getting to the meetings on time and coming up and then presenting. They've shared their enthusiasm, their insight and their support of the work that is being done at both of their high schools, oftentimes with humor, which is always welcome, but always with mutual respect that is appreciated by all in attendance. In other words, even though the schools at times are rivals, they're very complimentary to one another and it's really great to see. I'll tell you that Sophia is attending Cornell University to pursue engineering and aerospace. Kelsey is attending Boston College and will be studying business management. Shayna will also be attending Cornell University, where she'll be majoring in hospitality and hotel administration, and Tyler is not yet decided from what enters her, have you decided?
Yeah, recently, yeah. At UNC Charlotte.
UNC Charlotte, University of North Carolina Charlotte, where he's going, he's planning on pursuing political science as his major. So very accomplished young men and women, we want to thank all four of you, it's been delightful to hear you each, each other month, and thank you for all your hard work, because I know there are times when you could have been elsewhere, so we really appreciate you. So, Tyler? Shayna, do you want to join me in here?
Thank you.
Now before I talk with you about Shayna, we're going to recognize an award that she received at DECA, which is the Distributive Education Clubs of America. I want to recognize her teacher, Mrs. Louise Brown, who is here. So let me tell you about Shayna because. I'll start off by saying that Mrs. Brown, Louise Brown, business teacher at and DECA Club Advisor, again, Distributive Educated, Education Clubs of America, at Foreign High School, is just as proud as she can be, as all of us are, as Shayna, and you'll know why. When asked to share some thoughts on Shayna for tonight, it took Mrs. Brown no time at all to recall her memory of Shayna. As a 14-year-old freshman, Shayna shared two very specific goals. She wanted to be an executive in the hospitality and tourism industry, and she wanted to attend Cornell University, which is where she's going. As a sophomore, Shayna joined DECA, an international organization of management, marketing, and finance students, and won at the state convention in her category, hospitality and tourism, putting everyone on notice, that was as a sophomore. Last year as a junior, she not only won at the state convention, but also placed in the top 10 in the world at the international convention, again, in hospitality and tourism. This year, she not only blew them away at the state convention, but she also came in number one in the world.
Nice.
Okay? In hospitality and tourism at the international convention, which was held in Orlando this year. By the way, there were 18,000 participants at the international convention, and Shayna placed first. So we recognize her for this achievement, which is just phenomenal, and I would say to all of you, don't be surprised in about 10 years when you see Shayna on CNBC as a hospitality and tourism industry expert, I won't be surprised at all, Shayna. You've proven yourself very worthy of all the accolades bestowed upon you, whether they are for your academics, your outstanding effort in volunteering in the Milford community or striving for your future goals, which obviously you're on the path, so we know that you're just outstanding and we're just so proud of you, and thank you very much. I just want to say that Mr. Thompson and Mr. Berkowitz are here this evening, and you should be proud as well in terms of your students. What I also now want to do is, we introduced those student liaisons that are going out, and what we want to do is, we want to introduce all of you to the new student liaisons that are going to be serving in 2015-16. So I'd ask from Jonathan Law if David Patrick and Emily Carroll would come up, and from Foreign High School, Lindsay Carlson and Joseph Bartone. These are our new student representatives, and you have about five days in which to hear from those that are exiting, on any, you know, cues that they might want to give you or advice, et cetera, but all kidding aside, we're delighted to have you, I know the board always enjoys hearing from the students, so we look forward to having you here. And in preparation, we're giving you pencils. The last set of awards tonight are what are called the CAE Student Leadership Awards. CAE is an acronym for the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. CAE each year invites schools to give out leadership awards. They do this because they're committed to excellence in education, they seek to assist local and regional boards of education in providing high-quality public education for children across the state. The CAE Student Leadership Awards were developed 19 years ago to give local boards of education the opportunity to recognize student achievement and potential. Earlier this year, CAE requested names of students from each middle and high school in CAE member districts, they received approximately 433 names from 108 school districts across the state. Students were selected from among their peers for exhibiting leadership qualities as defined by a list of criteria developed by a subcommittee of CAE's Board of Directors. The criteria include the capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and the ability to honor a commitment. So we are going to recognize actually two students from each of the middle schools and two students from each of the, both high schools. So I'm going to call up the pairs of students, each school at a time, and I'm going to read you a little bit of information about them, so you get a feel for why were these young men and women selected. So I'm going to begin with East Shore, and I'm going to ask Brian Tran and Anya Bogas to come up, please. Let me tell you about Ryan. He's an eighth grade honors student at East Shore. He has good relationships with both his teachers and peers, you can always see Ryan smiling in the hallways and greeting his teachers. His positive attitude and good sense of humor make him an asset to every class. When working in groups, Ryan always listens to his peers and makes sure everyone participates. He is. He does not get discouraged from difficult tasks and is always willing to keep trying. Ryan is able to work with any student and help them complete their assignment. Teachers often look to Ryan to guide his group and keep them on track. When faced with a difficult situation, Ryan proves that he is willing to accept challenges and make appropriate mature decisions. In school, Ryan is an active member in the band, and he plays trombone. He has shown commitment to practicing his instrument to prepare for the school concerts and other performances. Additionally, Ryan supports our school through various fundraisers. He has donated to the school food drive, for example, with pennies for patients. Outside of school, Ryan enjoys playing basketball. He plays on a recreation league in West Haven. More often, he can often be found helping out his family. After school, he babysits and helps work as a cashier for his family's business. Despite his busy schedule, he willingly dedicates his time to assist his family. In the future, Ryan is interested in becoming a doctor or an astronaut. With his dedication and commitment, we believe Ryan will be able to achieve anything he sets his mind to. Anya Bogas is an eighth-grade honor student at East Shore. She is well-known throughout school for her positive attitude and infectious smile. Anya has good relationships with both teachers and peers. Teachers can always count on her to help out in class, and she works very well with all of her classmates. She uses her positive attitude to bring the students together, even if they're having a tough time. In school, Anya can be found helping others also in her free time. She volunteers to help in the chorus, to help the chorus teacher, Mrs. Friedman, with rehearsals during the flex period. Mrs. Friedman considers her to be a student leader who can guide her peers and younger students. If she's not helping at chorus, she is helping other students with their work or just cheering up their day. Outside of school, Anya is very dedicated to dance. She practices various styles of dance, including ballet, pointe, jazz, modern, lyrical, and contemporary at Lee Lund Studio. She received the Jamie Holly Dance Award in 2013 for her dedication and the Most Improved Award. At her studio, she can also be seen helping others. Anya volunteers with two classes of younger students to demonstrate dance moves and help them learn their routines. Also, she enjoys choreographing her own dances in her free time, both solos and group performances. Her dance instructor recognized her talent and commitment and is going to include a group performance she choreographed with her friends into their upcoming recital. In the future, Anya hopes to get into the junior dance company and improve her skills in pointe. She also hopes to master both German and Spanish so that she will be fluent in three languages. Anya has a bright future ahead of her, and her work ethic and dedication will allow her to reach any goals she sets. So I'll introduce Anya and Ryan. I should say that I know that Mrs. Williams is here somewhere, so we're delighted to have you here. And Mr. Gottlieb is also here from Harborside. So the two students, I'd like to ask if Kritika Kapal and Tyler Goodwin would come up. So I'll start with Kritika. She has been a student at Harborside for three years. In this time, she has proven herself to be an exceptional and well-rounded individual who makes a positive impact on both her peers and her teachers. She is a role model for everyone around her. Kritika is well-respected by her classmates because she is patient and kind, always showing concern for them. She is always willing to lend a helping hand, especially with academics. Her warm personality makes her peers feel comfortable and valued. She never judges them, but rather provides them assistance and insight. We often see students approaching Kritika for help on assignments or for an explanation of various concepts presented in class. She is extremely bright, maintaining high honors with an A average in all of her subject areas. For Kritika, each lesson is a new challenge and a new opportunity to expand her knowledge and understanding of the world around her. She is mature. She is also polite and respectful, caring and conscientious, responsible, organized, and hard-working. She is always willing to take on challenges and completes projects and tasks thoroughly and on time. She exhibits exemplary leadership skills each day in all of her classes. She listens carefully to other students' opinions and ideas and exhibits diplomacy, a characteristic of a good leader. Kritika is able to balance the demands of her schoolwork with a full schedule of dance and tennis after school. She's very involved in both activities and excels in both. She also plans on volunteering at the library this summer. She looks forward to her promising high school career, which will no doubt be filled with much success. Congratulations. And it's Tyler Goodwin, also Harborside Middle School, eighth grader. Intelligent, community-minded, and respectful are the descriptors for Tyler. He's involved in many extracurricular activities, both at school and the community. One of his most activities that has impacted the most is his membership in Milford's Boy Scout Troop 1. His volunteer activities with his troop are numerous. He recently assisted in the annual Boy Scouts food drive, loading collected food into trucks and unloading it at local food pantries. He also volunteered as the Easter Bunny at a breakfast with the Easter Bunny for Children at Milford Hospital. Does that take guts or what? In addition to Boy Scouts, Tyler also assisted his tech ed teacher at Harborside to build bee boxes as an additional community service project. You know, I was reminded, I've seen two programs of late in the last few months about the fact that there's a concern internationally around the decline of bees, and that's really can impact our environment. So I'm not sure if that's why you were doing that, but good work. He also worked at Camp Seques- Seques to build a hiking trail. As a Harborside student, Tyler has been chosen as a member of the school climate committee as a seventh and eighth grade student. He was an integral volunteer in preparing and ensuring the success of the first Harborside school-wide dance. He is also willing to help both adults and students. He is kind, polite, and respectful to his teachers and peers alike, but it is ability to anticipate a need before he is asked that truly sets him apart from others. It's a privilege to have Tyler as a member of Milford. I'd like to call up our two students from West Shore, Michael Bagdazarian and Michelle Michelle is the personification of walking sunshine. Each and every day, as she enters our eighth-grade classrooms at West Shore Middle School, we are treated to a genuinely warm smile and a friendly greeting. Academically, Michelle is a standout, having achieved high honors throughout her middle school career. Her enthusiasm for learning and willingness to commit to and tackle the hardest of tasks make her a model for all. Furthermore, her easygoing nature and strong interpersonal skills are recognized by her peers, and she is highly sought after for group participation. Michelle has also been recognized by the teachers for having been awarded the most prestigious award that the school offers. It's the Pride Award at West Shore for Outstanding Character and Leadership, and she received that award for three years in a row. Outside of the classroom, Michelle is involved in many extracurricular activities where she always seems to find a way to help others near and far. She enjoys performing. She has played both viola and the violin in the school orchestra for all three years and has even been selected to help the sixth graders develop their skills. Michelle is also an accomplished athlete, particularly a runner, and she enjoys playing both basketball and soccer, where she is both captain and a coaching assistant. She has parred her love of sports and desire to help others by participating in many charitable fundraising events. So for example, she ran in the Water for Africa Project and the Norma F., is it Prain? Breast Care Center? Again, for both of those, she did 5K runs as part of the fundraising. With basketball, she's raised money for the American Heart Association through the Hoops for Heart program, and in soccer tournaments, she has raised money for the families that were impacted by the Sandy Hook tragedy, the ALS Association, and even for local animal shelters. Michelle is a wonderfully giving person. She's energetic, intelligent, has a great sense of humor, and above all, is a natural leader. It's with great pride that West Shore nominated her for this award. Michael is an honor student in the eighth grade as well. He is known for his positive attitude, for his enthusiasm, and for his bright smile. This friendly young man is a hard-working, conscientious student. He is part of West Shore's enrichment program, where he constantly goes beyond any given assignment to be successful and to challenge himself. In his classes, he works diligently with teachers and his peers and is very comfortable sharing his ideas in the classroom. His relationship with his peers has been outstanding. He can often be heard encouraging his peers to do their best, to just try and try. Michael has earned the respect of his peers. He is a genuine leader. In addition to his fine character, he has participated and excelled in a range of activities, never shying away from a challenge. As a talented young musician, playing both the piano and oboe, Michael practices countless hours to perfect his talent. He recently participated in an ensemble with the Connecticut Music Teachers Association, which recognizes the finest musicians in the southern region of the state of Connecticut. Michael also loves sports. He plays baseball, golf, and tennis, but his shining moment is karate. He is a first-degree black belt and is working- I was going to say is working toward his second degree, but he already earned that, so he's a second-degree black belt. This Friday, practice. It's his dedication and strong discipline inside and outside of the classroom that makes Michael exceptional in every sense of the word. We are fortunate to have him as a student at West Shore and also as a Milford community student. Now we move to the high school, and I would like to call up our two Foreign High Schools' CAVE Leadership Award winners, Jennifer Westhauer and Tyler Pacello. Jennifer is hardworking, compassionate, and respected, a student who has been integral to the positive school spirit and overall climate at Foreign High. Jenny has a strong work ethic and superior interpersonal skills. Her energy and enthusiasm have been exemplary and are evident in her studies and extracurricular activities. She has been recognized for excellence in journalism, the Mayor's Youth Award for Outstanding Community Service, and she was chosen for the Daughters of the Republic, the Daughters of the American Republic Award for her dedication to the community, her patriotism, her leadership, and dependability. She is also a caps caller and achieved honor roll throughout her high school years. Jenny has an amazing personality and is able to inspire others. She is always respectful, upbeat, and treats others with kindness and generosity. Her love for her school and enthusiasm for getting involved has set her aside and served as a model for other students. She's a member of the swim team, softball team, and also an officer in natural helpers. She's also a member of the Foreign Innovative Thinkers Leadership Group. In addition, she is the editor of the Main Street Mirror, which is Foreign's school newspaper, and an active member of the Lion Pride Club. Jenny's school spirit and positive impact on the school was blatantly evident when she organized and emceed Foreign's wildly successful pep rallies. Furthermore, she also volunteers extensively in the wave mentoring program in the middle schools, and she is a Relay for Life Committee member. She will be attending Southern Connecticut State University in the fall, and she plans on majoring in elementary education. Congratulations. So you all met Tyler. I'm going to tell you a little more about him. If there was ever someone who was born a natural leader, Tyler Pacello is just that kind of person. He has served as his class president for each of his four years at Foreign High. This is a feat that has been accomplished by only a few students since our school opened 40 years ago. Tyler stands out as a student leader due to his commitment to fellow students and the respect he has garnered from staff and faculty alike. He has a wonderful and approachable personality, kind rapport, a caring demeanor, and is someone students and faculty look to as a leader in the school. He can always be counted on to accomplish any task put before him and is a student who always puts the best interests of the school ahead of his own interests. Tyler has volunteered extensively in the community, dedicating countless hours serving as an academic tutor to his fellow students, helping with local soup kitchens and assisting with the annual toy drive. He has done these and many more tasks while balancing the rigorous schedule of a vital member of the indoor and outdoor track and cross-country teams, where he has been recognized as the most valuable player and team captain. He is an active participant in the youth and government program, competing in the youth and law competition. He has been awarded the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leader Award, the Principal's Outstanding Character Award, and he has served as a respect ambassador. You already know that he served the Board of Education. He has earned the respect of both teachers and his peers alike and is someone who can get the job done. He is seen as the backbone of many school organizations and has taken the lead in school initiatives, including anti-bullying, school dances, and class fundraisers. Tyler thrives academically and enjoys a challenging environment. He's very interested in politics and government and has taken additional coursework in history and business. He hopes to pursue, as I said before, a career in politics and government and in helping his fellow students and the nation. And as I indicated to you, he has been accepted at the University of North Carolina, Charlottesville. So congratulations. And our last two students, but certainly not the least, are two students from Law High School. So I'd ask if Jamie Jowles would come up and Mary Zareen Adele. So I'd ask if Jamie Georgelis would come up, and Mary Zirene Adele. Jamie Georgelis is a remarkable young woman who sets the bar high for herself and works hard to achieve her goals. She has earned the distinction of Salutatorian for the Class of 2015 at Jonathan Law High School. In addition to her rigorous course load here, Jamie is a student at the Aquaculture Science and Technology Education Center, which offers specialized instruction relating to the development of aquaculture in the state of Connecticut. This year, Jamie is enrolled in a biotechnology class, which requires her to complete a research project to be presented at an expo. She was inducted to the National Honor Society during her junior year, is the recipient of the Harvard Book Award, the Merit Award for Academic Excellence in Medical Veterinary Clinical Lab Science, and the University of Connecticut Avery Point Book Award for Outstanding Achievement in Marine and Environmental Education. She is an AP Scholar, has earned the Excellence Award in English II, and was a semi-finalist for the Governor's Scholarship. Jamie has done everything right in her academic endeavors and extracurricular pursuits. An active member of her church, Jamie has taken part in mission trips and the organization of various fundraiser events. To fulfill her love of medicine, she began volunteering in the Cardio-Thoracic Intensive Care Unit at Yale New Haven Hospital, assisting in setting up rooms and keeping patients company. Her love of medicine is what brought her to a whole new level this past summer, when she worked as a medical assistant at the Milford Vascular Institute. It's my understanding you're going to... So Jamie is one of the students who is going to the UConn eight-year pre-med program.
Yeah.
And you're going to be studying?
Molecular and Cell Biology.
Molecular and Cell Biology. Mary Zirene Adele, did I write that correct?
You can call me Zirene.
Zirene, okay. She is the epitome of a successful student. She has attained high scholastic achievement while maintaining a rigorous and challenging course load. She is confident, studious, and intelligent. Zirene's energy and enthusiasm for learning is contagious. She has taken most of the honors and advanced placement classes that Milford Public Schools has to offer, which is amazing. Her high scholastic achievements have been awarded by her induction to the National Honor Society. She earned a CAP Scholar Certificate due to her exceptional performance on the CAP exams. She's prominently listed on the school roster as an AP Scholar with Distinction based on her high scores on five AP Physics, AP Chemistry, and AP English Literature. She scored a five in those courses. She is one of the highest-ranking students in the graduating class. Zirene's intensive academic schedule by no means limited her involvement with a wide array of extracurricular activities. She faithfully volunteered at the Yale New Haven Hospital for three years. Her upbeat personality and dedication quickly moved her level of participation to a position as ambassador tour guide. Her leadership skills resulted in a promotion to the Youth Leadership Council. She was responsible for training new volunteers while working closely with the volunteer service administrators. Zirene volunteered as a middle school tutor. She was also active in philanthropic fundraisers and performed community service for the local Rotary Club. And you are going to?
UConn.
Also in the?
No, for biomedical engineering.
Only for biomedical engineering. Going to UConn, so we congratulate Zirene as well. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck. So I know we took a lot of time, but it's really what the source of pride that we recognize every one of these students, and what a positive review to give to each of the schools and other Milford Public Schools. So we congratulate all of you, and also your parents, because quite frankly, and I say this over and over again, if you weren't supporting friends and families, your sons and daughters, they wouldn't be here this evening. So part of the awards that any one of them are receiving this evening is because of your support, and we thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Fieser. So we'll move on to student reports. I have here the four and goes for Shannon Tyler. Are you going to be reporting tonight?
Okay. We don't have quite a lot to report today because this is coming to a close. Congratulations, Bethany. We started with our guidance department. There was $64,258 in scholarship money given out at senior awards tonight for the class of 2015, and we'd like to thank the support of our community in providing many of these amazing scholarships for all of our successful students. And also congrats to Emma Romley, who was recognized at the Devon Rotary for the recipient of the 2015 Service Above Self Award for donating over 1,000 hours of community service. And she's only a junior, so she has another year to go. Donate even more hours as a customer. And also on Tuesday, May 28th, the KUJU underclassmen joined Ms. Beer and Mr. Rosenbrandt for a workshop aimed to get a head start on the college search and application process. Overall, it was a very formidable and successful morning for all of our juniors. And in other news, each spring, the Connecticut Council of Language Teachers is pleased to recognize and reward the excellence and achievement of deserving world language students at all levels of instruction across the state by offering the Connecticut Colts Award for Excellence in World Languages. And we would like to congratulate students Brooke Carlson, Michael Carroll, Calista Contras, Casey Gueden, Gio Esposito, Pierce Klein, Sal Rosa, Bahi Tumandurrell, Sidney Terriller, and Julie Eddy for earning these prestigious awards and had a lot of students placed very highly on the exam.
And on Friday, May 22nd, we hosted our annual senior picnic, which was a great experience. It was a fun day where seniors got to take a little bit of a break. Probably shouldn't be saying that, but it was great for everyone to kind of sign up your books, and just a great way to wrap the year. And on Wednesday, May 27th, we hosted our annual sports banquet. We honored all of our student athletes. There was wonderful flags and awards to announce all the student athletes, which was donated in part by our Blue Saddle Club, which we'd like to thank. And we also had our senior awards night, which we touched on earlier, but it was a great ceremony, which we honored a lot of our seniors who earned awards in either excellent in their classes or just scholarships that they earned throughout their years in high school. And to cap off that, we had our senior battalion on Friday, May 29th at Antasia in North Haven, which was a great time. You know, some high school dances are always fun. It was a nice way to kind of wrap the school year again. And lastly, we kind of want to congratulate the seniors, Gail Bededany and Trevor Osborne, for their wonderful artworks that we have been permanently giving to them. We look forward to it.
Thank you very much. So we're going to break for a couple of minutes after Law gives the report, so people that would like to leave at that point.
All right. We're going to start the report with guidance. Last Wednesday, Law voted a very successful senior award tonight, where seniors were honored with awards and scholarships for all their hard work these past four years. Law gave out a total of 125 scholarships, and more than $100,000 was given to our students. I'm very proud. This week is a busy week for seniors. We have class night, senior picnic, and graduation rehearsals. Our class night is a celebration. It's our final dance as a class, and that will be this Thursday. On Friday, we start off with a graduation rehearsal in the morning, and then we have our senior picnic afterwards. And finally, we will be having final exams this week. Seniors started today with their finals, and all underclassmen will start tomorrow with their finals. All right, moving on to news in clubs and other activities around the school. The Drama Club went on their spring musical this past weekend. Annie was a fantastic production and was well-attended. The junior prom was a great success, and a good time was had by all, so that was great. The annual Brain Bowl, sponsored by the National Honor Society, was another success. The event raised over $700, and the team representing the senior class won the competition. This past Thursday, we honored over 400 students at the Honors Breakfast for their academic achievement, so that was a great amount of students. Summer reading lists have been posted on the milford.org website for all underclassmen looking to get started on next year's work. Lastly, the Jonathan Law Class of 2015 is ready to close the chapter of our high school careers by celebrating our graduation next Monday evening at 5:15 on the football field. We hope to see many of you there. All right, lastly, with athletics, many of our spring sports have finished their seasons. However, our teams are still competing in postseason competitions such as the SEC, which is the Southern Connecticut Conference, and also at the state level. So just to recap some of those tournaments, softball went 11-9 on the season, and they made it to the second round of the state Class L tournament, defeating Dogma Chucks 7-5 in the first round. Girls lacrosse, in their first year as a varsity sport, qualified for the Class M state tournament, and they played one round. Varsity boys tennis singles player Bobby Fong advanced to the third round of his state's individual tournament. Also, we had three varsity girls tennis players go to the state's tournament as well. The first is Victoria Kontaxas, who played singles, number one singles, and the other two were Stravida Del Donkey and Raven Grant, who played doubles together at number one doubles, and all three advanced to the second round of their competition. Also, track participated in the Class MM tournament. The boys placed 14th out of 28, and the girls placed 6th out of 28. Individually, we had the top 10 finishers in state, and many more include Gabriel Haynes, Hurry Pritchard, Jeremy Doucette, Kiki Smith, Corey Kalpas, Tiffany Coleman, Melanie Coleman, Kelsey Kapazna, Olivia Steiner, and all-state winner Jess Centori. Also, just today, Jess Centori came in first place in the 400-meter at the state open, which broke school records, so we are very proud of her. Finally, we will be having the senior sports awards banquet this Wednesday at 6:30, I believe. And lastly, we'd like to wish next year's liaisons Emily and David the best of luck, and we know they'll do great.
Thank you.
All right, there are no objections. We'll take a just break for a few minutes, so this would be the time if the audience would care to go home, and I have not too much homework going on at this point. Normally, me and Chris is supposed to do homework, but you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting if you'd like.
Are you really?
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to public comments. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with the Milford Public School System. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted, consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Rights Privacy Act. Discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please be advised that our meetings are live on Channel 78 on cablevision. We have members of the public that wish to address the board this evening. Well, okay, we've seen none, then I'll move on to the chairs report. Do we have any liaison reports tonight? Spederico, you have a liaison report?
I have a report from the Permanent School Facilities Committee. We met on May 20th, and we were updated on several of the outstanding projects. So the East Shore Middle School project, they are finishing up some details on that project, so I asked the question, how long till we're done, because everybody wants to be done, and it depends on who you ask. Currently, they're doing outside work, which couldn't be done during the winter, so they're currently doing planting, seeding, moving around topsoil, which you need to go through a full season of that before that work is signed off on. And they're also waiting to finalize commissioning on the HVAC system, so that may not happen until the boilers are turned on in October. So it may be closer to October, November, December timeframe before it's final-final, but a very, very large portion of the work, as anyone who's been to the school can see, is done. Another project going on is the Foren High School Abatement Project, and that will be done over the summer. And then finally, we are still, we have an open requisition for an architect for all of our outstanding projects, and the deadline for reports to be submitted for that is June 24th. So after that date, we'll start the interview process. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Any other liaison reports?
I can report on PJ Council. I attended their meeting on May 21st. It's the second of my birthday, and it was their last meeting of the school year, so they're wrapping things up. They're ready to get going next year as well. There was just some last-minute wrapping up of business. Mr. Finn had the Lifetime Achievement Award. They will be holding their President's Roundtable Meeting sometime, I believe, this month if they haven't done it already, where the incoming presidents get together and discuss things that they'd like Council to address for next year. And that was about it. And if there are no other liaison reports, I'll move on to my chair's report. So I just want to remind the board that, you know, we are in the home stretch here, but I think this summer will not be quite as busy as last summer was for us. Just a reminder that we don't have any Cow meetings during the summer, so June, July, and August, there's no Cow meeting. You've been informed that July 20th is the date for Dr. Fieser's annual evaluation, so please make sure that's on your calendar. A reminder that our August business meeting is held the 4th Monday, which will be August 24th. This was noted on the board calendar that we approved last January, so that's a change that's made every year so that we can get more, some more current information regarding school enrollment for September. And at this time, we have scheduled a meeting, Dr. Mr. Richatelli has scheduled a meeting with the YMCA that will come and do a presentation on the before and after-school program at our July business meetings. That's, we're going to start with that. And administration is working on scheduling an SRO update that we had asked for to happen sometime over the summer, so that's being worked out as well. I attended on the board's behalf the annual Thank You Breakfast with the Milford Education Foundation. It was a lovely morning where the Milford Public Schools teachers, who were recipients of the mini-grants, the last round of mini-grants, came and did a presentation on what their project was, and I have to say, I left in awe of some of the things that are going on in our schools. So I gave each of you a little brochure on the foundation, they're kind of the end of the year wrap-up, and the little charm that, the ceramic charm, that was one of the, that was Jonathan Law's project, Ben's Bells. So if you go and Google Ben's Bells, you'll see, can learn about the program. So they're doing that at Law, and it's been very successful, so I, they had some of these to give. I asked if I could bring one for each board member, and we're happy to share the love, so it's a kindness initiative. So I'm sure that some of you will share your experiences during board comment, but I just wanted to say that I've really been most impressed with what I've seen, been seeing and hearing about as I've attended year-end events. Just the, Dr. Fieser mentioned Jamie Georgelis going to the UConn eight-year medicals program. She's one of three of our students that will be attending that program next year. So I was kind of interested, you know, what's involved with this? So I Googled it, and so they accept a couple of hundred, they anticipate a couple of hundred applications for the program each year. They grant interviews, you have to be interviewed, and they grant interviews to only 30 to 40 students, that's internationally. So 30 to 40 students interviewed, three of Milford students were accepted and will be attending. I think that's pretty awesome. And there's a lot of that. I mean, I've been hearing about a lot of those kinds of accomplishments, and so while the past 12 months have been kind of stressful for us as a board, sometimes filled with strife, I think we, as a board, should be proud of what we have accomplished this year. We've done a lot, we really have done a lot. I'm really optimistic about the future of Milford Public Schools, and I want to thank Dr. Fieser, Mr. Richatelli, Wendy, Sue, who we're going to miss next year, but, you know, you're at our meetings every month. And Mike, of course, cannot underscore your contribution to what And Mike, of course, cannot underscore your contribution to what, where we are at today. And please, Dr. Feuser, thank on our behalf, thank the entire staff. I know there's still a lot to do over the summer, but really, you're all a part of, you know, where we are today, and I really have just, just in reflecting on the year, been pretty odd about where we're at. So, thank you very much. And with that, I'll move on to, turn over the floor to Dr. Feuser for her superintendent board.
We're going to begin with a review of the Next Generation Science Standards. If you remember, we know, we knew the new science standards were coming, but we also knew that the state wasn't yet there, so we've been operating in kind of two worlds, the old science standards and the new science standards. But we have some good news, I think, to share, and actually, I'm going to turn this over to Justine LaSala, Supervisor of Science and the Career and Technical Arts, who's going to speak to the standards and the implications for our work and what's happening in Milford. Justine.
Hi. Good evening. I have something I have to read to you before I do the presentation. The presentation, the slides that I want to show you were given to me by the state, so they wanted me to read a little part to the board. The State Board of Education is considering the adoption of the Next Generation Science Standards as one pillar in a statewide effort to improve STEM education and keep Connecticut students nationally and globally competitive. During this pre-adoption phase, the State Department of Education plans to expand engagement with stakeholders regarding the implications, benefits, and challenges of adopting NGSS. The goal is to engender the same broad-based support that the recently adopted School Studies Framework provides. So the purpose of today's presentation is to give you an overview of the Next Generation Science Standards, and we'll highlight how these new science learning goals would build upon Connecticut's current standards, talking about some key advances and changes, and the potential benefits for Connecticut students. And at the end of the presentation, I'm asked to ask a little survey to gather your feedback to share back with the state. Okay? So just to go through this pretty quick, and if you have any questions at any point, please, please ask them. Any information in this slide is, has not been formally accepted yet. So this is just, again, this is a stakeholder engagement presentation to make sure that everybody in the state is informed about what the new science standards would be, but they have not yet been formally adopted by the state. We're still waiting. Hopefully soon. Oh! Now I went too far, right?
No, it's about right.
Is that right? Okay. So, again, the State Board of Education is really prioritizing transparency in the process of adopting the new standards, and this way that we do the presentations out and we gather the feedback from the people who are in the presentations, we can make sure that there's a constant line of communication about this. The short-term goals are to raise public awareness, gain support for adopting the new standards, and then report back to the state board. The basic way of thinking about these new standards is this is a new vision for science education. Students over multiple years actively engage in science and engineering practices, and I'm going to come back to the engineering a lot because it's in the new standards a lot. Applying cross-cutting concepts, it's even the understanding of each field's disciplinary core ideas. A big thing that you'll probably see, you'll pick up as we go along here, the new standards, the way we generally thought about science standards in the past was about content, what are the subjects we're teaching, the earth science, the life science. The new standards, the content is only a piece of the standards. There's a bigger focus on process. So there's two major goals. The framework document is the basis for the standards, and there's two major goals in that, educating all science, all students in science and engineering, these are standards for all, and providing foundational knowledge for those who will become scientists, engineers, technologists, and technicians of the future. Again, the big focus on these new standards is this is science for all. It's not science standards for enrichment students, it's not science standard for, the high school standards aren't standards for kids who are going to study science, there's standards for all students. What an individual should know and be able to do to be a scientifically literate person in society. Sometimes it wants to go, sometimes it doesn't. I don't know why it's doing that. Does it matter, do I? Oh, okay. Sometimes it, oh, Mike, that's a hard one. So of course, number one question would be, why do we need new science standards? Our science, our science standards are almost 10 years old at this point. The high school standards were adopted in 2014. The one thing that is really a highlight of these new standards is the alignment with the Common Core, Math, and the EOLI standards. It really, the new standards speak to the English Language Arts and the math, and it's integrated into them. There's also a shift towards that third bullet, scientific observation, argumentation, and discourse, which again helps build literacy skills in students, and it's very explicit in the standards about building literacy through science. And as the AP test signs have been changing over time, every year, they're kind of rolling out a new version of the science AP exams, this is also in line with that, and will better prepare students for the AP exams. Okay, so a little bit about the development of the standards. So these are the documents that led to the development of the standards. At the top left, it says benchmarks for science literacy. Again, those are the, these were created in the 1990s, they were really, the thinking was, what do people need to know to be scientifically literate and know what they need to be successful members of society? And then from that was the develop of this, this middle document, the Framework for K-12 Science Education. They, the people were, it was scientists, educators, and also brain scientists studying what would be appropriate for students to learn at different ages in terms of science. And from that document came the standards. And the standards really reflect exactly what it says in that framework. And again, this is another slide that just kind of reiterates what I said before. The most compelling thing about the new standards is that they are three-dimensional standards, which I'll get into in a little bit, and again, as I said before, the clear connections to Common Core, Math, and EOLI. Just in the development process, 26 states were involved in the development of the standards, and currently 13 states have officially adopted. As I said, Connecticut hasn't officially adopted yet, and we were, but we were hoping to hear soon. So, moving into what do the science standards look like? This slide just shows us how the emphasis shifts in our old standards, the current ones we have now, the Connecticut frameworks, to what they would look like with the Next Generation Science Standards. So the NGSS has more emphasis on students developing explanations from evidence, investigating real-world explanations, and reading informational text. Sounds a lot like our literacy standards. Less emphasis, however, than on repeating explanations in a textbook. Following instructions to do experiments is really a focus on students designing and carrying out their own experiments, not doing what we call a cookbook lab where the directions are in place. And really a movement away from using textbooks, too, because science textbooks kind of tend to water things down. This is, again, a description about the three dimensions of the standards. So the standards have three dimensions, and this little rope is a demonstration of it. One piece of the standards are the scientific and engineering practices, similar to what we used to call inquiry standards, but different in a good way. The cross-cutting concepts, which are kind of like themes, and the core ideas, and those are really the content pieces that we think of. So a sample at the bottom of the NGSS performance expectation with three dimensions. Analyze and interpret data, that's a practice, scientific practice, to provide evidence that plants and animals have traits inherited from parents, that's a core idea, and that variation of these traits occurs in groups of similar organisms. Blessing, that's a cross-cutting concept. The practices, this is really, in my personal opinion, a highlight of the new standards is this focus on scientific and engineering practices. The idea that scientists engage in these practices, they don't engage in them in a linear fashion, not like our old scientific method. They do all of these things, all different times, in all different orders, and at different points in time. So defining problems, the stuff that's highlighted in red is really a departure from our current standards, developing and using models. Number six, designing solutions, that goes to the engineering piece, and engaging an argument from evidence, which is really a literacy piece. Some of the other ones, the stuff in the black was kind of in our old inquiry standards. So again, just a comparison of Connecticut inquiry standards to NGSS. The Connecticut, the current standards, the inquiry standards were kind of standalone, and we only had one reference to engineering, which was in grade eight. And in the new standards, we have engineering is supposed to be touched in every grade, K through 12. And the practices integrate the three dimension, oh, sorry, the standards integrate the three dimensions, the practices, the core ideas, and the cross-cutting concepts. This is just a slide to show what the core disciplinary ideas are. Like I said, this is really when we think about the topics in science, the physical sciences, matter, motion, energy, waves. But we do have this piece on the end, which is really new, that they're considering engineering, technology, and application of science as a core discipline area of science. This is a big question that comes up for our science supervisor in the district, the content match. How different does the new standards look compared to the standards that we have now? So this was done by the state, they tried to see how much of the current standards will be in the new standards. So the white is where there's no match, K5, 6, 8, 9, 12, and the last one's K12 altogether. And so what you're basically seeing is about each grade level, a third of the content is the same. A third of the content is entirely new. But the content, as I mentioned in the beginning, isn't as important as it used to be because the practices and the cross-cutting concepts are as important as well. So there's definitely going to need to be work done at the state for these changes. Yes. I'm so glad I got a question.
Through your person view, question, when you say the content isn't as important, is that what you said?
The process is equally as important, and themes are equally as important.
Okay, so is it, you know, 33, 33, 33 across the board, or?
Yeah, yeah, every standard, every standard, it's a standard, actually, there's a slide that's going to come up later, but to compare, a Connecticut standard would be like, students need to know how traits are passed from parents to offspring. But the new standards always have a practice with it, and they also always have a cross-cutting theme with the standard. It's not standalone. They have to develop a model that shows that they can explain how traits of parents pass from parents to offspring. So it's, it's, it's a really important part because being a science person, science isn't about memorizing facts, right? Science is more about the process. If it was about just learning what we know, then there's all this stuff we don't know, so the process becomes much more important. And so it's really highlighted. The big change in these standards is the instructional shifts for teachers.
So if I may ask a question on that? So is that why, referencing before, you made a comment about textbooks not being as important as opposed to using other peripherals or other methods to come up, come up with conclusions based on materials that are, that information is given to them?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So it's not, excuse me, get something and feed it back?
Exactly, exactly. That's the big highlight. And I'm totally moving away from memorization and recall of scientific facts. It's what do we do with that information? And especially in this day and age, because years ago, you got the textbook when you're in the class, and then you had to hand it back in, and then you had to get some stuff in your head, you would, anybody can look anything up anytime, right? What are the parts of the cell, and what do they do? I could look that up on my phone, but more importantly, why is that information important? What can we do with that information? And that becomes really the focus. So yeah, it's going to be a bigger shift for teachers because it's about, it's a different focus on what they're teaching and how they're teaching it.
Another question. At the time when the new standards are implemented, how do you catch up an eighth or ninth grader that hasn't had the benefit of learning according to the new standards all along?
Yeah, we're going to have to do a transition phase, and so that we know, and I'll show you at the end, I think it is in here, the thinking was that the new assessment for this would be happening in 2019. So we would basically do, plan a transition timeline to get kids ready. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if I could maybe just connect this, if I'm understanding this correctly, you mentioned earlier that this, it ties in more with the Common Core state standards for math and the English Language Arts. So for math is concerned, math is much more now process-oriented rather than having the memorization and that rote learning and spitting back the, you know, the facts and figures more, how did you get there?
Yep.
So it's similar to that.
Yep.
And I, you know, we've also heard, you know, math investigations has been phased in, I think now we're at a point where, you know, where a lot of kids have already had it. So I expect we'll see something similar with the science standards, that phasing in type of.
Well, I think in this will be something that we'll have to look at further, but appropriate model to look at might be how we implemented the math changes at the middle school level, where as we moved to the new definition of what Algebra I is, working backwards, we had to change grade six and then grade seven, and for three years in a row, grade sixes looked different for successive groups of students because it's preparing, we've had to pull more and more scaffolding away. And as the board knows and has supported, we've put in place the Summer Math Academy to further support students, one, who are able to achieve at a more rigorous level but need some content filled in, but also to provide almost an acceleration lane for other students in order to catch up to the changes in standards. Because as Ms. Federico asked in her, pointed out in her question, that there's always that danger that you're going to leave somebody behind.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, and you know, just going to what you said, though, the training that elementary students, elementary teachers have had with investigations, I think will help them with the transition to the science, because again, the focus in that is really about students' thinking, and that's a really important piece. So anyway, just going back to this, obviously, the biggest change in content is at the high school, and that's going to be a big shift for Connecticut as a whole because there's a lot more focus on our science than Connecticut has in standards. So that's why it says 49% not matching. But again, there's also talk of the state assessment moving to 11th grade, and that would provide students with three years of high school science education before they took the assessment. But in going back to what I said, the biggest change really across. But in going back to what I said, the biggest change really across the board is in instruction for teachers. So we looked at the practices, which is, you know, the practices that scientists and engineers engage in. The other element of the standards is these cross-cutting concepts. I like to think of them as themes. And they're just kind of, you know, themes that we see over and over in science, and we can connect our learning back to all the time. And again, it's explicitly there in the standards that students would, whatever the topic is, whatever it fits, you know, whether they would connect it to the idea of patterns or structure and function. And again, it's just helping them develop schema around the important big ideas in science. And as I mentioned, engineering is probably the biggest change in the standards, which is really exciting because engineering brings in the piece of, well, what do we do with scientific information? Engineers solve human problems based on what we know about science. They apply science to things that affect our lives. So a big piece that we will see, if it's adopted, is that students at every level should really be involved in this engineering design cycle of designing solutions, testing them out, revising them based on the results of their tests, which is a really exciting piece. We've already started to do this a little bit in the middle school. The sixth grade students this year designed a water filtration device, and they were given the chance to revise it and retest it. Eighth grade students did, designed solar cookers, things like that. So that's something that we've started to incorporate more of. Oh, and so then, here are four, actually, these are four standards, just so you get to see an idea of how the engineering is embedded. So the kindergarten standard is analyze data to determine if a design solution works as intended to change the speed or direction of an object with a push or pull. Again, the old standards would have been, you know, students understand how to change the direction of an object with a push or pull. But this brings in analyzing data and evaluating a design solution. And you can kind of see examples of this. Grade nine to twelve life science, design, evaluate, and refine a solution for reducing the impacts of human activities on the environment and biodiversity. So again, what we did currently and we did in the past, is students would know how human activities impact the environment. But now the pieces, they're going to be asked to design solutions to those problems. So this piece is a little bit about assessment, what the plan is. And again, since the state hasn't adopted this, this is just forward thinking about the assessments. Because right now, currently, we have CAPT in grade five, no, I'm sorry, CMT in grade five and grade eight, and CAPT in grade 10. The big thing that's going to have to happen is the assessments are going to have to change, obviously, since our standards have different expectations, the assessments will as well. And currently, we assess kind of one dimension at a time. Describe the strengths, the effects of strengths and pushes and pulls, just the content. Whereas the new standard would, students would have to plan and conduct an investigation to provide evidence of the effects of balance and unbalance forces on the motion of an object. So I probably envision some more performance task pieces built into the assessment. Not sure exactly what that would look like. Or students having more constructive response on the, on the assessment, where they would have to kind of set up an experiment or something like that. This is another kind of example of the difference between a traditional assessment question and what NGSS style might look like. The traditional one is just kind of a recall question. Vocabulary question, convergent, divergent, transform boundaries, the one on the right. Draw on the picture to show what was happening, it's asked for an explanation. Just a more, it's, it's a more rigorous type of assessment. But again, the assessments aren't done yet, so they still need to be created. And this goes to the proposed transition, kind of what the state is thinking about. Again, dependent upon the state word of education adopting the standards. But the first administration of the state assessment aligned with NGSS would be 2019. And that would give us three years to transition. So if you thought about the middle school, we'd start, you know, working on grade six. Two thousand sixteen, grade seven, two thousand seventeen, grade eight, two thousand eighteen, to get them ready for their, you know, you kind of work backwards from that. And the state also wants to make sure that all stakeholders know that they do plan to provide supports for districts. They plan to provide these leadership development academies. They're starting to set them up. They're starting to ask teachers to apply to them. And they're going to do all these kind of practices and study groups. And they're going to be working on writing performance tasks. Hopefully, that'll be great, that, you know, districts will be able to use. And also the fact, just the fact that it's a national type of standard as other states adopt it, that means whatever other states use, we can use as well. Yeah, the way it is currently, we can't always use other states' stuff or things that have been created because our standards aren't aligned with theirs. So that's the beauty of becoming common. And again, this is another slide, plans that the state has for developing teaching resources, performance tasks, sample learning units, classroom assessment resources. They also plan, they're going to roll out teacher workshops starting in the fall for them to start learning about the expectations of the new standards. And this is just kind of an overview about, you know, what would be suggested. Districts to-do list at this point. This year is upcoming school year, as the state offers professional learning for teachers, you know, sending teachers to these trainings, making sure that they get the information that they need. Two thousand fifteen to seventeen would be the curriculum revision and review process in the district. And they said sixteen to eighteen, adapt or acquire materials. It's too early to even think about materials because they don't really exist right now. And, but currently, two thousand sixteen, nineteen, expect and look for transformed teaching practices. And one way we've already started to do that is with the scientific and engineering practices. And this last slide is just places where you can get more information, or if you have questions. And I think that's it. Anybody who have any questions?
Yes, it's Federico.
For you, Madam Chair. Just a question, when you mentioned before about moving away from textbooks, does that also help you keep the information more current? Because I think a science textbook probably gets out of date pretty quickly.
They do, yeah, yeah. So the science tech, also, science textbooks tend to generalize all the information. So it gets kind of watered down and filtered out, you know? And so again, one thing we probably see is more and more use of current articles and stuff like that. You know, I, I'm sure there's going to be textbooks created that align with NGSS, but I would wait and see, you know? And again, science changes so much. Right now, every biology textbook is obsolete, is something recently that happened. So, you know, that's how it goes.
Is there any talk of online textbooks that could be updated more quickly?
That would be great, yeah. I don't think anybody's real, California now has officially adopted. And then, since they're a big state, now I think textbook companies will start working. But they also have a three-year transition. So as more and more states get on board, and big states get on board, then publishing companies will start putting stuff together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of related questions. With the changes necessary for the professional development, who's going to pay for that?
That's a good question. The state is saying that they are going to run some of that, so that they are going to do that. But there's definitely going to be professional learning that has to be done within the district as well.
Have they funded any of the professional development at all?
I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay. And then, assuming that we have to have professional development, you're talking about a three- to four-year window. Is that adequate? What are we going to do with the teachers when they're going from the classrooms to get the education? How are we going to cover that?
Yeah, well, I'm hoping that the state's going to offer summer institutes and such, and that would be a better way for training the teachers, honestly. Any curriculum work that I plan to do, I hope to do mostly over the summer. So they're not missing classroom.
The last question I have is getting away from textbooks, which are costly to start with. Are we getting additional cost, materials to do experiments like? Do you have any concept of that yet, and ideas on that yet?
I think, you know, we're definitely going to need to upgrade some of the materials that we have. And, but I, again, it's, it feels so early in the game to know exactly what we're going to need. We always have consumable materials in science, it's the nature of science. So I don't know if it's going to be any necessarily more than, maybe other than the beginning, it's a little bunk because it's new stuff. But every year, we have to refurbish all our science kits and buy instructional supplies. So I don't know, it's hard for me to judge.
The last question I have, which follows up on that, do you foresee a need to put substantial amount of money into facilities?
I don't know, I don't know. To me, in the short term, I see more towards teacher training and, and working on curriculum units and developing lessons. To me, because it's more of a shift in instruction, that's the bigger piece more than materials and facilities. But again, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like because we haven't seen the assessments, they haven't been created yet. So there's some unknown stuff there.
Thank you.
I would only add to what you, Ms. LaSalle just said, that the, I think the greatest challenge in this, as well as the other curricular areas, is the, the shift in working with teachers away from areas where they're very comfortable in content, and moving to it to be more about practices and thinking and acquisition of skills where they're not as comfortable. So the work that Ms. LaSalle and the other supervisors have really been doing for the past three years is putting in motion these shifts so that teachers are more flexible to adopt to the standards that are either in place or will be coming. Because soon, we're going to be hearing from Dr. Barbera about the changes in the social studies standards, they're next, so. I think it's the ability to improve the flexibility and adaptiveness of our staff is the true challenge.
Yes, Dr. Cole Torkin?
Well, thank you for the presentation, that was great. I have one question about the, there's a different focus in terms of the elementary level and what's needed and the middle school and high school level in terms of teacher training. And, and what those needs might be for the district. So can you comment on, on that?
I'm not sure what you, what you mean.
In terms of needs, in terms of, is it just going to be teacher training at the elementary level? Or do we also need a shift in focus in terms of amount of time devoted to science at the elementary level?
Oh, oh, that's a really good point. Yeah, actually, the, I would say the expectations for elementary science education are very much amped up in this. It's expected that students would engage in more science on a regular basis, the expectations. I agree. That's something to consider. But the fact is that the literacy and the math really are intertwined into it. I think it really kind of helps that as well.
Ms. Mr. Wiskman?
A couple of questions come to mind is, I presume, since they haven't yet adopted this, that it's still open to consideration of further input. What's the timeframe for that input before they make their final decisions?
So actually, when, when you all are done with your questions, I'm going to give you a short little survey, feedback survey, and I will ask for specific comments that you want to be sharing with the state, with the Science Department at the state, and, and share that information. That's the point of this process. And again, at the last slide, there's contact people there. If people wanted to contact and, you know, have their voice heard.
The other thing in terms of curricular development, we have seen before how you might start with an endpoint and have to work backwards as to the prior knowledge through the, through the prior grades. In this case, it looks like all the way from twelfth grade down to kindergarten. To what extent has that curriculum development for this kind of approach either been already implemented or to, or how much of an extent of curricular development is likely to be needed, and how long will that likely take in, in terms of this kind of knowledge? Because despite the fact that the focus is on process, there still needs to be some previously developed knowledge before you can move to the next stage at almost every kind of scientific development. You have to start somewhere. You can't understand algebra if you don't understand arithmetic. I mean, you've got, you've got to, you've got to build as you go forward. Despite the fact that you're talking about process, there still needs to be some stepping stones. So I'm just wondering if this impacts the curriculum and the development, and to what extent that, that lattice is in place, and how much of an effort that will be? Because we've spent a lot of money on curricular development, including the last couple of budgets.
Yes, we have, and I defer to Ms. LaSalle for just a second. But I would say, we've had some conversation about how this could be done. You try to be as thoughtful and, and logical in your approach as you can be. But unfortunately, even with the, we talk about a 2019 window, you know, essentially, we're looking at what the current eighth grade class is going to be, the seniors for this, or the current seventh grade class will be going into their senior for this. So the timeframe is relatively limited. Probably the, the best type of model of giving the opportunity is what we did with mass investigations by doing K two one year, and then in successive years, three, then four, then five. But at the same time, we were making concurrent changes in the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade because we couldn't wait for, you know, essentially, this, this fifth grade class is the first group that's had four years of investigations. I don't know if you want to talk about even just the thought you had shared with me about kind of three different entry points.
Yeah, yeah, so I, you know, I started to kind of map out what we, what would make sense to do thinking, well, next year, we would start on grade three, grade six. I've already started on the freshman course for the high school because I changed the freshman course at high school to be Environmental Science. It used to be a physical chem, you know, phychem class. With the shift to making an environmental science class, I kind of was looking ahead to the standards, thinking that we're going to have to incorporate more of science. But again, so I kind of started doing that already in the high school. But we'd start working in grade three and grade six. And I'm still thinking about the lower grades. It could be K, you know, the first year, we could do K, three, six, nine. And then the next year, we'd work on one, four, seven, and kind of roll it up that way.
And the final thought is that in engineering, there's core knowledge areas. When you go to the college and want to enter an engineering class, you're expected to have math, physics, and chemistry. Those are the core competency areas the engineer, they're required. You don't get to be an engineer if you don't command those particular areas, which is one of the things that makes it very challenging.
Right.
So one of my concerns here is the somewhat fuzzy definitions that are used here in terms of zeroing in on engineering at the same time, not providing a clear structure that ends with the student being competent in those three areas if you want to pursue an engineering area or competency. Not that the average individual in society needs to have an engineering degree or necessarily high competence in those three areas. But nonetheless, if, if they want to incorporate the, the engineering concepts within the process, I don't want to see it watered down to the point where they're just calling it engineered, but it's really not.
It's really the engineering design cycle is what they're really trying to incorporate. But you're right, it's a, it's an important point. And we still have, you know, in our tech ed department, we still have a lot of engineering-focused classes. We have our CAD classes, we have introduction to engineering design. Again, with a little different focus on that as well. And you still, of course, if a student is interested, they want to take, you know, our traditional physics class or something like that. It's more about, the, the piece that was missing before is, in, in the old standards, is what do we do with this science? We just, are we just learning it to learn it? You know, because a lot of kids don't really feel connected to it. By bringing in the engineering design cycle, you always bring it back to, based on this information, we're all, people, society is always trying to design solutions to problems. And you have to have information about. And you have to have information about this stuff in order to design those solutions. And it's just, it's really the engineering design cycle. So, you're right on one level, but it's, it's a positive thing because most kids don't get any background in engineering currently. They have no idea what it is. When I went to college, I had no idea what engineering is. I thought it was like train engineers. I really, I really didn't because I never was exposed to it. So, it's kind of, if you don't know, they, they say, the research says, the only kids that really go into engineering is they have a family member that's an engineer, or they know someone's an engineer, because otherwise they never get any background in what engineering is. So, so it's a positive.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, for you, Madam Chair? The way you laid out the examples, so in, in the first year of the new standards, if you introduce them in K-3, 6, and 9, so that would mean that seventh grader in that year wouldn't see the new standards until they got to ninth grade?
Yes, because you said, because they would still be operating under the current Connecticut assessment system. So you still have to prepare them for the current assessment. So, the, the eighth grade test that they have to take is aligned to Connecticut standards. And so you don't wanna change it up on them because then they're not gonna be ready for that assessment. It's gonna be a tricky balance though.
And then when they get to ninth grade, you would change, they would be on the new, learning on the
They would be on that new track, yeah.
And they would be on the right track for the assessment?
Exactly.
If they would take it in tenth or eleventh, whatever.
Exactly. The big talk is that would, it would move to 11. But that again is not set in stone in any way.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if no more questions, or can I just ask the, yeah, okay. So the, the questions that I'm supposed to ask, and maybe we could do it by raise of hands. I'll ask you a, I'll, I'll say a statement, and we'll use a Likert scale, you know, strongly disagree? Disagree, does that make sense? Okay, so the first statement is, participants in my group understand the changes to teaching and learning which are associated with the next generation science standards. Strongly disagree? Disagree? Agree? Okay. Uh, strongly agree? Great. Two more. Participants in my group believe that the changes which will occur if we adopt the NGSS will be good for Connecticut's children. Strongly disagree? Disagree? Agree? Strongly agree. And last one, participants in my group believe that the changes which will occur if we adopt the NGSS will be good for the state of Connecticut as a whole. Strongly disagree? Disagree? Agree? And strongly agree. If anybody has any particular concerns that they would like to share and, and share out with me, I could put it into the, the feedback document. I'd be happy to take your feedback. Particular concerns related to the adoption of NGSS.
The board might wanna consider they could email.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great.
People have thoughts?
That'd be good.
That'd be great.
If you, I would, you would need this pretty quickly? By the end of the week?
A, a week or so, that's fine, no immediate rush, but yeah, that would be great. Any feedback that you wanna send along that I can share with the state for you to represent your thoughts about it, I'd be happy to share.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have one other short comment. Based on some of the questions from some of the other board members, I just wanna ask if you can clarify in terms of integration of the practices, the scientific and engineering practices. Is that something that, I know the state for the last couple of years since the NGSS became finalized, the state has been saying that we should start to implement the practices. So is that something that Milford is already doing? Like in terms of Ms. Federico's question, a seventh grader, are they, you know, if the plan is to change things next year at K-3, 6, and 9, will all of the grades, will we have a change in the emphasis of all the new scientific practices, science and engineering practices?
This is a good question. So, on the secondary level, 6 to 12, we've already been working the past two years on incorporating the, the scientific and engineering practices into instruction on a regular basis. So, that's something that we haven't done yet at the elementary level, but needs to roll out as well. So, that's a good point. So in addition to doing the changes in curriculum at grade level, the practices can be done now because you can just incorporate, you know, I always say to teachers, you look at practice, you look at your topic for the day, design a lesson combining them, you know, that's the easy way to do it, but that's a very good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a quick, just, well, do you mind if I do the reconfiguration first?
Sure, yes, that's fine.
So just a quick update on, so the last time we reported out, or I reported out, was on May 5th, so here we are a month later. And, much has been accomplished. At this point, all parents of children in the elementary level know their child's assignment, including pre-K and self-contained. Also, the number of classrooms for each grade, grade level has been determined to date. You saw those in the last meeting where you were given the enrollment chart, actually, from Mr. Cummings and he insisted you had it by grade level. You also had highlighted some areas of concern, but that's, there's, that's where it stands at this moment. We do know that the number of classrooms may change if families move into Milford. And as a result, the numbers in a grade level classroom, the seats, the guidelines, so if there are, for the sake of conversation, two fourth grade classrooms, and right now they sit at 23, 24 students apiece. And then we had three families that came in and say, so that's 46 kids, and you had five more fifth grade, fourth graders move in. Chances are, we may very well be looking at those because then you're talking about classes that are over 50, uh, over 25 kids in a classroom. So, that, that's what we're talking about, that there may be a change. And as far as staffing, good news, that staffing of the buildings is complete, including the, that's all professional staff and also paraprofessionals. Also, the departmentalization that we're aiming to implement in fourth and fifth grade is really underway. The schedule, a schedule for enabling that to work in the schools has been drafted. And the elementary principals are really working with that because they have different scenarios. One, one school might have two fourth, fifth grade sections, another might have three sections of fourth grade, two sections of fifth grade, another might have three sections of each. So there's different scenarios, and how do you make that work? But, but there's excitement and clearly, Mrs. LaSalle and Mrs. Swanson, who's over math, and then also Dr. Barbero are all gonna be very much involved in those teachers, with those teachers in terms of professional learning and curriculum, et cetera. So we're pretty excited about that. With respect to moving, the preparation for the move has begun. 215 classrooms are to be moved. Just to give you an idea of the scale of this. There are seven different scenarios, I won't go through all seven, but let me give you an example. There are internal moves in a building, there are also external moves. So, internal, for example, you can have a grade change and a room change. So I could be a third grade teacher, but I'm moving to fourth grade, and the classroom that I'm currently in is gonna be moved. And I have to move as well, but it's all within the building. I could have, I could be in my building and there's no grade change, I'm still gonna be in, what did I say, third grade. But, the room that I'm in happens to be being changed because they're wanting to put the grades together, for example. Externally, we have some teachers that are going to another building, but they're gonna be in their same grade level. We have some teachers going to another building in which their grade level is changing. Both case scenarios, you could have rooms literally having to be moved, in some cases, rooms would not be moved. So it's, all comes down to how many classrooms are in each school at each grade, grade level, and also what the staffing assignments are for each of the buildings is really what it's contingent upon. And as far as the boxes for packing, which is related to these moves, there are different labels for every one of the seven kinds of moves. Color-coded, with, again, with the idea of making sure that the materials that need to go are moved to the materials that need to stay, stay, those materials that are, or furniture that are in a building, you know, would be, if it's, but it's moving down the hall, those kinds of things are all labeled. For teachers, it's really all the instructional materials. There have been 4,000 boxes that have been delivered to the elementary schools as of last week. Another 4,000 will be delivered this week for teachers to do their packing. They can only pack using the boxes that are being issued by the school system. So it makes it, there's consistency, and then for packing them into the moving vans, you know, you're not working with all these different size of boxes. This Saturday, all the media-centered books are gonna be moved. So that, that's the first big move of materials, so that's this Saturday, those that have to be moved. And then, next Saturday, the 20th, is when the big move begins. On next Saturday, the 20th, for all intents and purposes, all the elementary schools will be closed. Except for the offices will be open, but they're closed, they're closed to the public, they're closed to teachers, et cetera, to enable the move to really take place, begin to take place and move as efficiently as possible. To help teachers with packing up, we opened the school a week ago Saturday with the goal of, they didn't have boxes yet, but it was with the idea, if you wanted to come in and start purging your classroom of stuff that you don't need. And then, they, up to the beginning, this would be on the mornings on Saturday, and Mr. Bradbury had other work that had to be done in each of the schools. So, there was a reason beyond being of support to the teachers that the buildings were open. So, this Saturday and next Saturday, staff, if they want to, can come in on Saturday morning again to do packing, if they so choose. And, the other thing is, is that for student and parent orientation, the decision that has been made that August 25th, which is a Tuesday, all eight schools will hold their kindergarten orientation. And how it's gonna be done is that four schools will have their orientation in the morning, first thing in the morning, 8:30 to 10. So that's JFK, Batherson, Live Oaks, and Ongavany, we're gonna put all this into a letter that would go home to parents. And then all, in the afternoon, from 12 to 1:30 would be the other four schools, Orchard Hills, Cath Pan, Metal Side, and Pomp and Delight. So they'll all be held on the same day, but four schools will be in the morning and four schools will be later in the day. Teachers will be in the buildings, so parents and students will be able to meet the classroom teacher. Students will be able to go down to the classes and see, you know, where, where is their classroom, et cetera. The principals will obviously be there and they'll have a brief meeting with, with parents at the start of the orientation. So, we think that that will go well, they'll also have, what do I wanna say, the introduction to transportation. And they'll, they'll be able to take a little trip on the bus, it's not gonna be the same that's been done in the last five years because now they, the children can get on the bus from their school building because there's smaller numbers of kindergarten kids in a particular building, so the buses can be right there. So, that's gonna be on the 25th. Also, in the evening on the 25th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, while teachers will not be present, the principals are going to keep the schools open so that any parent and child that wants to come back to the school, or maybe there was a parent and child that couldn't make it during the day, that they could come in. And it's just as like a drop, you know, kind of a drop-in time for, again, parents and children to come in and just familiarize themselves with the school itself. And then the convocation, the opening of school convocation will be on Wednesday, the 26th. So that's where we're at, right at this point. We feel very good that this much has been accomplished. However, Mr. Bradbury was here, I'm not sure, he would say he feels really good because it's, you know, he now faces, you know, the move itself. But the cooperation, his cooperation and leadership has been tremendous. And the cooperation on the part of the principals, you know, I think they, they, they really understand, you know, you know, what's needed and really have stepped up to the plate, providing the, the information that's needed. Mr. Cummings, having gone through this before, has really shepherded lots of this, which has been enormously helpful. I should tell you also that with respect to Chromebooks, we are in the, for the third through fifth grade next year, there actually are going to be nine Chromebooks in every single grade three through five classroom. And so I asked him in anticipation of your, about, this was Louis Giancola, in anticipation of your asking, well, what about the K-2? The K-2 will remain with what they have for one more year, the lease will then be up on the Chromebooks, correct?
The K-2 classrooms.
Okay, I'm sorry, K-2, so then what will happen is, is that some of the other equipment will be able to be moved in, so they'll have much, much more, correct?
Yeah, we have to, the Chromebook is an appropriate technology choice for the grade three, five students. But I think one of the things that will have to be considered next year when the K-2 lease refreshes is, what would be the appropriate technology choice for students who are that young? It may not be the Chromebook, and we'll have to see what the purchase compare. But, as Dr. Fizik said, the, we're able to go to nine classrooms, nine Chromebooks per three, five classroom without increasing the lease, that's been in place, the lease amount that's been in place for the past four years. And we would wanna do the same thing with K-2. Well, people may wanna do that next year with the K-2 refresh.
Madam Chair? Yes, Dr. Cole Torkin?
So the kindergarten through second grade classrooms have desktop computers or laptops?
Currently, they have desktops.
Desktops, and how many are in each classroom?
Three, Karen, are you counting? I think it's three.
Three, okay.
Other questions, Mrs. Federico?
I have two questions. A parent asked me this question, they were curious if there will be a list or any way that parents can find out which teachers are going to be at which schools. Yeah, I think they were thinking it'd be nice if you, even if you don't know who your teacher is, you can say, oh, Mrs., Mr. so-and-so will be there.
And the parent advisory, when I met with them two weeks ago, we talked about the same thing. The difficulty is, is that there are so many changes that we are reluctant right this minute to post the lists of teachers. So, for example, this past week, we, we appointed, after an interview process, the four new teacher leaders. Well, all four of them are internal, they're all four teachers, they would've been on the list that would've been publicized, and then all of a sudden, they're not a classroom teacher and somebody else is gonna be in those classrooms. So, so there's still movement, you know, if we have more retirements, if we have people who transfer, a transfer meaning their husband or their wife, you know, gets, the spouses, they have to move and so they're leaving. So, we're just reluctant to put those lists up because we know there, there's gonna be movement. And when there's, part of this is, is that, you know, you may say, well, isn't it just a vacancy? The reality is, is that because of the, I don't understand at all, but because of the displaced pool, that when an opening comes, depending upon the opening, there may be a teacher in another building that has the right to that position and may choose that position. So then that person moves over here, they had been on this list, they're no longer on this list. And so we just said, no, we're not ready to do that right now.
Is there a point in time where you might, over the summer?
Possibly, you know, well, I mean, and, and teachers will certainly, I mean, parents are gonna be learning, you know, in August, as they always do, who their, who their teacher, and in fourth and fifth grade, teachers will be in terms of the departmentalization, you know, who their math teacher may be, who their know, who their math teacher may be, who their, you know, their science and social studies teacher are. But again, with that, with the movement, we were just hesitant to declare because just even in the last two weeks since I met with, I was going to look at Carol Thomas just here, you know, when I met with the parent advisory, there's been a number of changes that have occurred between and among buildings.
Okay, thank you. And the second question was about the orientation. That's only for kindergarteners?
No, and I'm just spoke on that. The five to 6:30 would be for grades one through five. That's mine. Yeah, that would be for grades one through five.
Okay. So anyone who's changing schools can attend or even not change?
Or not. That's right. So the morning ones are really for kindergarten, and then the evening is open to all grades one through five.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just want to make sure before we have more questions, were you finished with your report or did you have more on the reconfiguration, Dr. Fieser?
No, I'm finished.
Mr. Sadi?
Madam Chair, through you to the administration, I'm sorry.
Sure.
The question is, you now have an idea of how many classrooms per school, and I thought I heard say at some point, and I can know if somebody might move into the district. Do you have an idea at this point how many of the schools might have two or three classrooms that are already in capacity, think one or two, we have to add another classroom?
That was on our?
On the sheet that we gave, we provided at the last meeting.
That was a month ago.
No, it was of committee of the whole meeting, so it was two weeks ago, I think. When we presented the budget, we presented an enrollment sheet, and on that sheet, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy in front of me, it was highlighted in yellow, the classes that are right on the edge.
The numbers are the same then? It sounded to me like the numbers had changed, that's why I was asking the question.
No, what we're, I mean, we're monitoring it, but we know that there are classes that could very well flip and that we would then be having to create an additional classroom.
Thank you.
Other questions?
The next item on the agenda is, hopefully you will like this. It's a, we thought, because it's the end of the year, we just honored many kids, which was great, that we would just do through a slide format, not my giving a speech, trying to capture a year in a review. And this is just a sampling. It's very hard to capture, but lots and lots of good things and good work that's gone on. Either one, Kathy?
No.
I have to say that Kathy Benetti was instrumental in the design of this. So, and this is not necessarily chronological, but if we go back to last summer, one of the very first things was the number of projects that were done with our facilities. 122 facilities and construction projects completed last summer. Some pictures, just to refresh you. One of the themes at the start of the school year was a whole thing around collaboration and really working together to improve instruction. This is a group of literacy, the literacy coaches, but, you know, 140 teachers we trained last summer in professional learning communities so that they could work. This is all part of teacher evaluation. Teachers work in what they call PLCs, in a learning community. So we had all these people who were trained. We also trained people in, there were a lot of Google and Google Docs. We called them the ninja teachers, Google ninja teachers, to help in every one of the buildings. And then also 200 teachers who were involved in curriculum work. This was our, these were our 48 new teachers that joined the staff. And if you're wondering why were there so many of them, you have to remember that we had over 25, I think it was, teachers who retired last year. So automatically, you had to replace them and you had others. This is the chiller, if you remember, the temporary chiller that was moved into foreign high school because of, actually, you know, it was in, right at the first week of school, I believe it was, when the, when the air conditioning went out. And this is where we began, our students and the breakdown of the enrollment. So some academics, real quickly. You know, at the elementary level, we're really pleased. Math investigation is fully now implemented in K5. It just began four years ago, and here we are at all grades. Reader's Workshop, Writer's Workshop, Character Education, the bullying program, those are all in place at the elementary level, fully. The variety of courses at the high school, 176 courses kids have available to them. There's the breakdown. New courses that were implemented this year, couple of which you heard about: personal finance, jazz improvisation, et cetera. You've seen this, but we like to revisit it. 141 students named AP scholars, and then the different kinds of scholars. You heard that, trying to remember which student it was that we recognized tonight, that she's a AP scholar with distinction, and you see that she scored a 3.5 or more on five exams, AP exams. Across the state, our AP performance, we rank 12th. This is out of 116 communities that have high schools with AP. And then within our DUR group, we were number one out of the 24 districts in our AP. We also had, you know, we had our college fair. This is sort of like, when you think in terms of kids in the continuum, juniors and seniors, first they go to a college fair, let's start talking about, you know, what schools are we considering, et cetera. Then they apply. Here's a sampling, just a sampling of college acceptances. I want you to take a look at the quality of these universities, these colleges and universities. And those of you that remember when we first set this goal four years ago, we would not have seen this list. Now you're going to see a sampling of where are kids going. So we know for a fact, kids are going to these specific schools from foreign and law. So I want you to notice the quality of these schools. Cornell and Drexel and NYU and Penn State, Yale, Worcester Polytech, UCLA, Savannah College of Art and Design, et cetera, Rensselaer Polytech, and there are more. But this just gives you an idea. These are, these are individual students, and some of them, like the UConn pre-med program, three kids are going to that. So we are, we are really, I think, lifting the caliber of colleges that are, many of our students are attending. Don't know if you noticed, by the way, even later, Kathy, that we also had a student accepted at Brown University this year. So, accepted at Brown, student is not going there, student is going to Yale. So. Okay. In technology. So, Google, and you had some introductions to Google this year, and, you know, it's really being used lots and lots of places. Kids and staff have taken off with it. Tweeting is now being done. So Mr. Thompson is now tweeting. I can't read that tweet down below. Can you read?
That was his first line. Lawman, proud and ready to tweet.
Right, right. Just as a, as a communication piece. This is interesting, another technology, a scratch lesson prompted. They were so impressed with our kids were doing. These were kids in, I believe, sixth grade, using this software program to plot negative and positive numbers that Sikorsky engineers, Justine's not here any longer, came to see what the kids were doing because they talked about the fact that this are things that they do at Sikorsky all the time. You remember the kids who came, the Lego League? This is again around use of technology and, you know, kids thinking and that kind of stuff. Collaboration, major theme again for this year. Some examples that, you saw this, but I want you to know that, so there's been so much collaboration. So, for example, standard spaced report cards, you've heard a lot about the fact that those are being created. Those are teams of teachers that are creating those. Professional learning communities, teams of teachers. What's called the professional growth opportunity, which is a PGO, which is permissible as part of our teacher evaluation plan, where teachers who are considered, who have been rated effective or highly effective, instead of having three observations, can have two, and the third would be a professional growth opportunity that they get to create themselves in collaboration with someone else. And then, of course, literacy, which is this group of folks, all around collaboration. Familiar? Lumberage planning, you want to talk about your collaboration? You know, I mean, you all, you didn't always agree, but that's okay. I mean, you know, you eventually came to, you know, you know, making good decisions in the fall and in the spring. Centralized kindergarten registration. When we held it, you know, upstairs here, I mean, the number of people that had, that were part of making that happen was tremendous. This is, collaboration, you know, here's J. Rowe, you know. Some slides on learning. This was Veterans Day, you know, that this keeps growing every year, what we're doing in the schools with our veterans and kids really learning about them. This was the Memorial Day field of poppies. I don't know if any of you drove by Matheson, but they had every child created a poppy in honor of veterans, on Memorial Day, in honor of the veterans. The big read, these were people who came into the schools to read. Actually, if you flip back to that one, that's a, that was my error. I was thinking of a different slide. This was a group of Vietnam veterans that came in, and the kids in this class, which I believe is a philosophy class, this is Paul Totoro, they read the book, The Things They Carried, which is about Vietnam soldiers. And so these four men came in, all of them having served in Vietnam and engaged in a philosophical discussion around the book that the kids had read. Pretty exciting stuff. District Y, here's 375th anniversary, just a couple of slides from that. Again, kids were involved in families, et cetera, on the school system itself. I think I skipped that. That's Kathy Benetti slipped that one in. United Way, you know, something we engage in, you know, and we raise nearly $40,000 this year in some pretty unique ways in which we did it. So you have on the left, East Shore Middle School, God bless Kathy Williams. They had a pie, the pie in the face contest, Kathy being one of them. On the right, Captain Metal, they collected 15, enough pennies, $1,500, all for United Way. This was a service day, Martin Luther King, that the mayor announced, and then you see on the right, one of our students who made cookies in front of to the fire, you know, to the fire department. Did you know Milford has, it's an official flower now? This was the garden club, introduced every kindergarten child to the eastern purple cole flower as Milford's official flower. And the children, actually, from the seedling, the flower grew and they took one home to their families on Mother's Day. The Wonder Book Celebration, which has just been a huge hit. I can't tell you how many people in this building have read the book, Wonder. It's been great. End of the Year Celebration, which you just were at, which you honored, our teacher, parent, and paraprofessional of the year, as well as Michael Cummings Award recipient. And these are our kids and what we're about. So, so much more that we could have included in that, but it just kind of gives you an idea. You know, when you think in terms of what we did, you did actually with, here we are, we just finished the conversation on reconfiguration. Well, you, you engaged in that work, and here we are. This is going to happen, you know. We're going to reconfigure to K5. It's going to go very well, and instruction and programs are even going to be stronger as we move into the K5, which is going to be really good. So lots of good things. The budget is enabling us to do some things, you know, with your support. As I said, the teacher leaders, we are in the process of trying to hire our new safety coordinator. You know, we will be hiring the graders for the middle school. There's lots of curriculum work that's planned this summer and further training, et cetera. So, good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the next item is the, I'm going to end here.
Concussion policy.
So the concussion policy is the same with the exception of one addition on the recommendation of Mr. Sadi, and that's indicated in this on the second page of the policy, I believe. It is in red?
In yellow.
Oh, yes. I think two of three of the policies are. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Sadi?
It's excellent. Almost as good as the picture of you than the last slide.
So that was the only change made?
Yes, the only change that was made, that was the only change that all of you suggested. You should know, I think it's interesting how the two athletic directors, you should feel very good about this, they are so on top of this. They brought me last week the new revised form based upon the policy and what the state is doing, the sign-off form for the parents, and then there's, you know, other forms that parents have, the new, the physical form had to be modified, and information sheets, et cetera. And so that's going to be ready to go with respect to the athletes who will be involved before the, before the school year begins. So it's good stuff.
Are there any other questions before we have a motion on this? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you very much. Madam Chairman, make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 5141.7 entitled Student Sports Concussions, as found in our package, page six, rate is amended by the comment by attorney, by Dr. Fieser.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this policy? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries down this lady.
The next item on the agenda is the proposed budget transfer request. Mr. Richard Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Fieser, Mrs. Glenn, members of the board. As you know, as we get toward the end of the year, we come to you in vain to make initial budget transfers, and then you can anticipate that in July, we'll come with the final budget transfers once all of our numbers are in and we're able to close out the books. But as I've come to you each quarter, to give you a snapshot of where we are at that time, I've told you that there would be some areas where we would have surpluses, and there were some areas that we would have some things that we need to be covered. And so at this time, what we have in front of you is what we have as of now. And so the two areas where we're transferring from, or requesting that be transferred from, are teacher salaries and retirements and severance. And as I've explained in the, in the transfer itself, and as I've pointed out to you throughout the quarterly reports, we had an inordinate amount of retirements last year in the 14-15 school year. And as I've told you, we budget each year for the average, which is 18 teacher retirements. Last year, we had 28 retirements. We had 10 more retirements than, than the average. And then, and for what we had budgeted for in the 14-15 budget. What that means is that coming into the 14-15 budget, we have a turnover savings because we have that many more teachers that were hiring at lower salaries than those that had retired. And so that's the, that's the, where the increase this year is in teacher salaries. In, on the opposite side, teachers going out in this current 14-15 school year. Again, we budget for 18, and we budget enough money for the average number of, the average number of 18, and what that will cost us in severance pay going out the door. Again, we budgeted in 14-15, 18 expected retirements, and to date, we've only received nine. And we don't believe that, at this point, we don't believe that anyone else will retire. If they haven't retired after all of the moving is If they haven't retired after all of the moving assignments have been made, we don't anticipate that they will. And so, what that means is that we will pay less out in retirement and severance pay for this 14-15 school year. And so, thus, at this point, we're projecting that we will have surpluses in those accounts of at least $350,000, which we're then making recommendations of where to transfer those to. Now, you, you might say, how could it be so out of whack? Well, if you take the two-year average, that's 37, we had 28 retirements last year, and nine this year, which is 37, which is our two-year, if you put it together, the two-year average is 18.5 teachers. So, our average holds true, it just happens that it was skewed in one year of 10 more than we normally have, and skewed this year in 10 less than we normally have, which creates this imbalance. The transfers last year at this time, we only transferred $50,000 out of teacher salaries. So, last year was an average year, based upon the previous year's number of retirements. And so, this year is an anomaly, this, we don't anticipate that this will happen again. In the 15-16 budget, we've, we've budgeted for 18, which we expect, if we get back to our average, it will be next year. And so, that's where we have the surplus coming from. And then, we're transferring to those building projects, and grounds projects, and other projects, that we identified for you in the memo that went from myself to Dr. Pheaser, and then included in your update, which is what we do each year. These are projects, as, as we always explain at this time of year, they're projects that otherwise are not budgeted for, and probably couldn't be done, and, and so, we've identified those areas where we would transfer into. And as you can see, from, from building projects, and what we talked about at the, at the Cow meeting, there's, there are several energy management projects and roof repair projects, that amounts to $75,000. The Meadowside School Traffic Flow and Safety Project, that has been in the capital improvement plan for well over five years. It was funded by the city at $500,000. We, we anticipate, the bids actually come in this coming Friday, but we anticipate that that will be about a $750,000 to $850,000 project. And so, we're, at this time, we're, we're booking a transfer of $350,000 to supplement the money that the city bonded for that particular project. In telecommunications, we, as, as you probably know, as we've talked about before, our district has moved to a voice-over IP telephone system, which in the long run saves us on our telephone bills. That conversion has been done at all the elementary schools, all of the middle schools, the academy, and central office. The last piece that needs to be finished is the, the two high schools. And so, we anticipate that we'll be able to do it this summer with the, with the transfer of these funds.
Doctor Woods-Worthing, do you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chairman. What company are you using for the voice-over internet protocol?
Total Communications. They're, they're the company that won the bid for the initial, for the initial outlay, and they also hold the state bid price. They've done the conversion on all of the central office and the middle schools and elementary schools.
So, just to clarify, you've used them in the past before, more than once? Basically, for the whole process?
They did, they've done the commute, the conversion up to this point. So, at this point, it's, we've used them for three years, it's been done in phases. Central office was first, the elementary schools were second, middle schools were third, and now we're at the high schools. And, the special education, as you know, when I come to you with quarterly reports, every year, I mean every report, the special education accounts are in deficit, because we spend much more, and the bulk of that deficit is picked up by the state excess cost grant, but it doesn't cover everything. And so, we're able to absorb about $100,000 in that, which is what the city has booked in revenue on the city side of the budget. So, that's where $100,000 will go to. And the last one, as we spoke about at the Cow meeting, we're buying dumpsters for the city's new front-loading recycling and trash collection system, and then, the rest of that money would go toward additional smart boards for our classrooms. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for you to Mr. Richitelli. I have a few questions. The first one is about the retirements and the severance pay. What exactly is the severance pay represent for retirees? Is that like accrued vacation or sick time?
It is, it's vacation time for the teachers, teachers and, teachers don't really have vacation time, but all of our other employees do. So, if they have vacation time at, at the time of retirement, that would be included in their severance. And then, the other is accrued sick time, and every contract is a little bit different, but the, about the, where most of them are, is that they are allowed a cap of, of a number of accrued sick days, and then they get paid out for half of that.
Okay.
So, that, that's what accounts for the severance. And the vast majority of it is teacher, teacher salaries, and payouts for teachers and administrators, although we have many less administrators per year than we do teachers.
Okay, so when they retire, it's, it really is the, primarily the sick day time, then?
Correct.
We don't pay them for time, beyond the time they've worked, when they retire?
No, no, it's, it's sick and any accrued vacation time that they have left over.
Okay, and I know you said that the number of retirees, I get that the two-year average makes sense, how about the dollar amount? I mean, the fact that we have 350,000 left over, is that in line with, I don't know, what we paid out last year versus what we're paying out this year?
Well, the budget, the budget last year for, for severance was $900,000.
Okay.
And, when I came to you last year, just, just to point out where we were last year, because we had that many more retirements last year, we had to pay more out in severance. And so, part of the board transfer in July from last year was to transfer $150,000 into the severance account.
Okay.
So, now, now next year, if, if we go back to where, where we were with the average, because we have so many less retirements this year, we have to watch very closely where we're going to be with, next year with what we've booked, because we've booked, or we've, we've absorbed into the budget enough turnover savings for 18 retirements, and since we only have nine to this point, we have to watch very closely next year where it's going to be. So, it's-
On the salary line?
Exactly.
Right, okay. Okay. And the severance, was that, do you happen to know what we budgeted this year?
I don't have the budget in front of me, but I believe it's very close to that, $900,000.
About 900, so we're taking 350 away from the 900.
Correct.
Okay. So, even though we had half, roughly half the number of teachers, it's only a 350 savings?
Because it's not just teachers.
It's not just teachers.
There's, there's others that are pretty much in line with what we normally have.
Okay, all right, thank you, that, that clears it up. I have another question. Can you explain just a little bit about the Meadowside project, and will that be done this summer?
We hope so.
Okay.
We're, it's, it's one of those things where, this is truly, we, we can't do anything until school gets out. So, the bids, once the, once the city bonded the project in February, we did an RFP for architectural firms, and, and it was a very, it was, it was a quick turnaround as far as the engineering goes. Then we did, we currently have an RFP out on the street for the actual work itself. The bids are coming in this Friday, assuming we have enough money between the city project and the transfer we made, and we can award the project, roughly, they're going to have about eight months to get this project done.
Okay.
So, it's, it's going to be tight. It includes, what it includes is the demolition of the module, the, what do we call that?
Portable classroom?
Yeah, portable classroom that's dilapidated at this point.
Yep.
That will be, there'll be a driveway and additional parking on that side of the building, as well as some additional parking on the left side rear, but where the portable is now.
Okay.
Which will then facilitate a more orderly and more queued area for drop-off of parents on the right side of the school, and an additional area for buses in the center of the school.
Okay.
So, it, that, there's, there, there are a number of schools where we need to do the same thing. Meadowside is in the, in the queue. We've done it before at CAF Pen, JFK, we're the last two that were done. Now, Meadowside, as I said, has been in the capital improvement plan for well over five years. And then, in the current capital improvement plan, we have similar projects being done at CAF Pen and, and Live Oaks, when the construction at those schools is, is done, you know, two or three years from now.
Okay, yeah, I've been in that Meadowside drop-off lane, it's, it's good that we're improving.
Yep, and it's, and it's more so than anything else, more so than the convenience of just a more orderly drop-off area, it's, it's going to be an improvement in safety.
Yeah, that's been a concern, okay, thank you.
Mr. Wissman?
Not so much a question, just a comment. Given that we're moving a lot of boxes this summer, including into Meadowside-
Yes.
-are the complications of moving while you're constructing, I certainly hope we have taken that into account in terms of the timing necessary to get this project done.
We haven't, it was, there's a phasing that's being done, and, and so, all of the, all of the, the trucks that are coming in, and the moves that'll be coming in, will be on one side of the building, and the construction will start at the opposite end of the building. So, that was definitely taken into account. We, we have a contingency plan, we hope that it doesn't come to this, but if for any reason the project isn't completed, the, the parent turnaround will be, the first piece completed, the bus turnaround will be the second piece completed, the third piece that will be completed is the additional parking, because if we have to, we could have teacher parking across the street, the, the armory building that the city now owns. That would require definitely a crossing guard, and perhaps a police officer to make sure that teachers can, can walk across the street safely, but that's our contingency plan, if we're not able to finish construction by the time the school starts.
Thank you.
Seeing none, you need a motion, Mr. Sadie?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves administration's recommended 2014, 2015 budget transfers as found in our pages 13 to 14 of today's packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You now have the Heat and Resource Report, Mrs. Kapazna?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This month, you have again, the current listing of job postings, as well as the personnel changes for the month, including resignations, retirements, new hires, as well as the list of our annual paristipends, which is something that's in the par contract. At the end of the year, we pay out a small stipend, either $350 or $400. The $350 stipend is for those pares that are working with our most medically fragile students, as well as pares who deal with toileting issues, et cetera, lifting. And the $400 stipend is, in addition to that, people with special training, ABA training, pares working with our autistic population, as well as, you know, you'll see someone who's trained in braille, sign language, things of that nature. So, although it's not a huge stipend, it is something that we give them each year. And I just wanted to point out, although I don't want to mess up Mr. Richitelli's numbers, every year that I've been here, I believe we've received a retirement after the last day of school, so I'm banking on maybe one or two more, if that'll help you out, it won't mess you up too much. So, we'll report back next month on that. And I also want to happily report that we so far have two new hires for this coming school year, both in shortage areas. We've hired a speech and language pathologist, and today, we hired a Spanish teacher, so, gracias, that was awesome. Very happy to get Spanish teachers. And this individual that we hired had another interview set up later in the week that they promptly canceled, so kudos to Milford. And I also want to report that in addition to that, I'm keeping Dr. Pheaser and Mr. Cummings very busy later in the week, because five more teachers who are in the last stages of interviewing are scheduled to come in this week, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have five more new teachers.
Is there any questions for Mrs. Kapazna?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a one-time modification to the Milford Teacher Evaluation Plan. I wrote in the addenda form, you know, what is expected on the part of the state, and the state sets, has regulations of what needs to be included in teacher evaluation, and one of them is that teachers need to be observed three times a year. The, the one exception for our, our plan now is, is those teachers, as I explained to you, who are involved with a professional growth opportunity, PGO as we call it. But we had a situation where we had an administrator who departed from the district and had completed the observations but had not written them up. And so, here we were with the dilemma of the teacher having to observe, but the, the write-up had, not having been done, and so, how does any one of us go in and do the write-up when we weren't there for the observation? So, Shannon Carlson, who oversees our teacher evaluation plan, contacted the state, we were also in communication with MEA, the union, around this whole issue, and we learned for the first time of this flexibility option that the state has. Basically, what they said to us is that there are circumstances like this that happen in other districts. And so, they built in this flexibility option. And, and so, what they wanted to know is, is that the teachers, which was, it involved 16 teachers, what had they been rated? Were they considered, under using our scale, effective and highly effective teachers? And we were fortunate that all of them were rated that way, so we could impose the flexibility option. So, for these teachers, they would have, they, they really only need one observation to be completed this year, and, but, but the state said we had to have every teacher individually sign off on it, the principal of the building had to sign off on it, I had to, I also had to give approval of it, and then it has to be brought to the board for, literally, you saw the language in there, for the board to sign off on it as well. So, we are coming to you, basically, for you to accept the modification, which we will in turn then notify the state that we followed. We, we're in compliance with their modification.
Are there any questions?
So, this is one-time deal?
One-time.
And if it happened again, obviously, we'd go back to it and do it again?
Right, I mean, it was a, it was something, I mean, we've been following our plan now, this is the third year, and we haven't had this situation, but, but this year, we did. And so, it was one of those things of not wanting to penalize the teachers for something that was really not, that wasn't their doing.
So, does it make any sense to make this part of, you know, like denim or part of the plan, evaluation plan?
We can't, we have to work through the state, if something like this, or there was, I don't even know what else, but there's other scenarios apparently that could happen as well.
So, just to clarify, when I say the one-time modification, it's not, it's, it's one-time for this situation only?
For this situation, for these 16 teachers, period, and then, it's, it's ended, and when we come back in September, our plan is, is to be, it will be applied to everybody.
Motion, Mr. Sadie?
Thank you. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the modification to its Professional Learning/Teacher Effectiveness and Performance Evaluation Plan for 2014-2015 as found on- and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, as found on page thirty-seven of their board packet tonight.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I'm sorry, second. Mr. DeRosa, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Mrs. Glenn, and actually, we're finished with this section, but can I now go back to the student and parent orientation information because I left a piece out?
Sure.
So I shared that on August twenty-fifth in the morning, all eight schools will have their kindergarten orientation, eight-thirty to ten for four of the schools, twelve to one-thirty for four of the schools. At two o'clock, so that kindergarten ends at one-thirty, at two o'clock to three-thirty, actually, the school will be open for all one through five students and parents to come in, and teachers will be there. So they'll be able to, again, you know, walk the halls, et cetera. You know, the principal will be there to be able to greet parents and probably have a short meeting. We would not be doing transportation for these students, because this is grades one through five. So that's pieces that is in the afternoon. And then the principal said they will also make themselves available between, they themselves, between five and six-thirty in the evening, again, for those parents who aren't able to come during the day so that they can come in with their children. Or if somebody wanted to come back, there won't be teachers there, but they certainly can access to the building and the principal will be there. So I forgot that piece, sorry about that.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, we move on to consent agenda. Mr. Sadie?
Thank you. I make a motion, Milford Board of Education approves the following consent agenda items. Number one, the disbursement report. Number two, consideration minutes of the May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen business meeting, and the May twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen committee of the whole meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeRosa, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Have you had no new business on the agenda? Move on to board comment. Anybody who would like to make board comment? Mr. Sadie?
Thank you, Madam Jeffries, and members of the board. I had the pleasure and the honor of going to two of our schools this past week, R and J with Mrs. Swift and CAF Pen with Mrs. Fedigan. It's eye-opening to see the boxes and the material's already done already, but I can assure the board that the ride is starting on its smooth path. There'll be a few bumps along the way, but it certainly is, it was wonderful to see the actor, the members of the staff, the teachers, and even those can be moved. And the boxes are already in most of the schools, and some are partially filled. So good job done on the planning. End of it, and we'll see how it works out in three months.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Just, I want to thank Dr. Pieser for the twenty-fourteen-fifteen year review. I thought that was excellent, and I would encourage administration to place such positive, forward-looking materials on our website and do everything we can to engage the public further. It's always good to see the accomplishments and the good news of the work being done. And I think we should spread that word and do everything we can to encourage the public to see that we're really moving forward.
With a board comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the cycle, Chief Operating Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn to executive session.
So do we want to move, since the cameras are being filmed, do we want to move on to maybe Mr. Cummings?
Sure.
Is that right, Mr. Cummings, if we used your...
Oh, please, roll call.
Call the meeting back to the order. Mr. Sadie, you have a motion?
Thank you. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education increase the salary by two percent of the Chief Operating Officer effective July first, two thousand and fifteen. As I indicated, it's a two percent salary increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pacelli seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Claire Casey?
Yes.
John DeRosa?
No.
Suzanne DeBias?
Yes.
Jennifer Federico?
Yes.
Heidi Goldorkwin? Anthony Pacelli?
Yes.
Robert Sadie?
Yes.
Earl Whiskeman?
Yes.
Susan Glenn?
Yes.
Okay, so pass this.
Motion carries.
Seven.
Okay.
One no, one abstain.
That's it, right? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Is there a second?
I'd second it.
He already seconded before that.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
At eight, eleven, ten, thirty-seven.
DVR shows. DVR shows, I missed all the ads.
Yes.
Can you mail that stuff, survey information?
I don't think I do.
Ads, if she can mail that person.